Nope.
I don't blame you. Alright. Alright, this meeting of the Southwest Licking Local Board of Education will come to order. It is July fifteenth. We are in the district office meeting room. And I'd like to recognize all the visitors here and everyone at home. And if y'all could please join me for the pledge.
Hello, this is an Aetna Elementary Connection Club with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, Aetna. And Mr. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler. Mr. Zani.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here. A quorum is present. We will continue on. Public participation, anybody? No? Okay. Then we have a rather robust agenda ahead of us this evening, and we need to adopt it. So, someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to presentations. Garmin Miller, Hill Robertson. Who would like to go first?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you all again. It's been quite a while since I've been here.
It has been.
I'm gonna give an update on the athletic building project. I was out there today. And as far as the bleachers are concerned, the concrete was finished up today. So, everything underneath the bleachers is complete. And we are getting some pricing to connect the bleachers to the drive over by the renovation project. Because we're gonna be moving that ticket booth over by the metal storage building. And then we're gonna be bringing a ten-foot walk over to the bleacher, because that's gonna be the main entrance now for the home. So, that's where the ticket booth is gonna be moved. So, they're gonna be pricing out some concrete work for that. That'll be installed in two weeks.
I was gonna say, will we be ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he said he wouldn't be onsite next week because he's gonna be working somewhere else, but he had the following week to finish it up. It'd probably be a three-day job.
Okay.
So, it'll definitely be ready. The skirting on the front of the bleacher needs to be complete yet. I know Dan Clayton, they were not onsite the past couple of days, but I believe that had to do with them doing all that concrete work underneath the bleachers. So, they don't wanna get in their way. So, once that skirting gets to complete there, they'll finish up the electrical and the bleacher press box project should be wrapping up by the end of the month. So, it looks pretty awesome. Definitely a big change to the view there, so. The athletic building itself, over the past three weeks, there's been, I think, a big change in the cleanliness, one. And just getting this, the work done that needs to get done to get the building occupied. There's still work that needs to be done, there's no doubt. But as of tomorrow, the coaches' office, I was told, is going to be complete. It's gonna be cleaned and the doors are gonna be locked. So, on Monday, the coaches can come in and use their office. This, the next priority is gonna be the main locker, the main football locker room. They stained, started staining the benches today, so they'll get that completed probably tomorrow and into Monday. The only thing that right now is a little bit of a concern is the showers.
Yes.
Right.
They are working on it. The plates are in. I'm relying on them to make sure that they get it done. So, a little bit of a, of a mess up there, but they're working hard to get it done.
And that.
They understand the schedule. I get on them daily about it.
Okay.
So, but the exterior is pretty much complete. They're gonna paint the columns yet. That shouldn't be too much of a, of a deal there. And then we're gonna do a little bit of extra concrete work over by the concession area. There's part of that was, that was done today. But in looking at it, we're concerned that there might be a choke point right by the scoreboard. So, we're gonna extend that concrete just a little bit more to widen that path to get to the concession. We're concerned about a, we're probably talking another hundred square feet, so. Now, there shouldn't be too much cost. They're gonna price that with the ten-foot walkway on the other side.
Oh, okay.
They final graded that, I'll call it that triangle area. They're final grading and seeding that. They were working on that today. And the inside, they're just working to get it done. So, I told the site contractor, or the site superintendent that it needs to be done as soon as possible. It needs to be done right. And they're, he assured me they're gonna have it completed, so.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not personally walking through it today. I'm not concerned about that getting, getting done.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll tell you that.
Even with the showers?
It's gone, it's gone leaps and bounds over the last three or four weeks, so.
The stadium seats at the bleachers, are those gonna be in the first day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, now, I know that there was, Jake talked about a potentially an additional row. I haven't got confirmation on that additional row.
Okay. But the stadium seats?
Yeah.
As is, will be there?
As is, correct.
Hey, somebody asked me today, how many people can we put in the stadium now? Do you, do we have a number?
The new ones, new ones, two thousand, and I think the old one was eighteen hundred or something like that?
About thirty-eight hundred.
About thirty-eight hundred people. Not just seating only, then what's?
Yeah.
People standing around too. You probably get north of four thousand.
But I didn't have an answer, but thirty-eight hundred would be.
Unless you're like me and Brian, then you probably get about, eh, thirty-two hundred. I put myself in too, Brian, so.
Yeah. I know that there was some questions about the walk back to the coaches' office, about potentially getting a sidewalk back there. I'm gonna talk with Shira, who's our landscape architect, to see how that will work with fencing, because we wanna make sure that it's still secure. So, it just may be something where an additional gate would need to be put in so that the officials could walk through the gate, and yet you could lock the gate and it's still secured during games. It does give them a quicker path. The reason why we didn't do that, because we did talk about that, was because of that, that security feature of that. But if it's, if we wanna put in an additional gate, that's fine.
Okay.
Right now, they just have to walk around the back of the building, as you know. And then there's gonna be one other item that I bring up. I don't wanna bring it up here because I don't have the plans. I noticed it today about a potential area that was gonna be grass that I might want to propose as being stone. That it might flow a little bit better with the rest of that area behind the concession area. So, I'll bring that up to Bob and Rick and see what they say. If they wanna continue to be grass, we can do this grass, so.
Alright.
Are there any concerns that you have? I know the plumbing was probably the biggest concern at this point.
Just that and making sure we're ready. Sounds like we will be, so.
Yeah. He assured me, so.
When is the first game, or is there?
August twenty-sixth. It's your first home game.
Okay.
And he told me the seventeenth. Didn't he say that? That it would be done by the seventeenth? Because I even questioned him, the seventeenth? Yes, absolutely.
Of July.
Of July.
Yeah, which is.
Saturday.
Yeah.
The plumbing will not be. I can tell you that.
I could just say from being, I went in there Monday and from being in there the week before, I was shocked at how much it had changed, how much work had been done in just a week.
Yeah, just a week, yeah. Yeah, it, it, the, the tones changed a little bit, making sure that they get it done, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Card's turn.
Good evening.
Good day.
So, last month, we talked about the K-three, and we got direction about the location, where to put it, and what size to make the building. And so, we've got a update for you on that. So, if you can see the cursor, so this is Watkins Road. The current middle school is down here. We're not showing it now. This is the maintenance area, the track, and then the athletic building that Brian was just talking about. And then this is a layout of the K-three building, which I will show you in another slide in a second. But the idea is that the building sits here with staff, visitor, and bus drop-off with access from Watkins Road in the front of the building. And then you can't see it on this plan, but the traffic light is down off of the sheet a little bit. And the idea would be to continue the drive like it is now, for parents to drop off, come up and drop off here on the side of the building, and then either park or work their way around and go back out to try and keep as much of the traffic off of Watkins Road as, as possible. Towards the north side is where the playground would be located. And these small squares here are a plan for future expansion, if you would decide to add on in the future. We've sited the building in such a way that it's away from Watkins Road as far as we can get it, and as far away from the soccer fields as we can, as we can get them, and still allow for some expansion. Some of these other athletic fields are just kind of a placeholder to show what could go in place of the, of the middle school, just to give you an idea of how much space is there. And we'll continue to develop that over the next several weeks.
Okay, not all that parking's in the plan, right?
Yeah, so this is additional parking per OFCC. There's a certain number of parking spaces that you would have. But we've showed what would fit there also. So, we'll be fine-tuning that number as to what's co-funded through the OFCC program and what would have to be locally funded if you decide to do that.
So, that building will be the task elementary, the K-three.
Yes.
And I, that's one floor still, correct?
Still one floor, correct.
Okay, and it's built for six hundred students, but the common areas are built for eight hundred?
As big as we can.
Designed, I mean?
As big as we can afford, yes. So, the grand total dollar amount is twenty-four million. That's what we're basing everything on.
Okay.
Per the OFCC, there's, the size of the common areas is based on either a number of students or a minimum.
Okay.
So, we've increased the gym about seven hundred square feet, and we've increased the cafeteria also to be at least six hundred.
And how many kindergarten classrooms are part of this?
So, there's six. And if you like, I can go to the next plan and show you a little bit.
Sure.
Large area of that.
I didn't realize there was more.
There is a little bit more. So, what, what this is, is just the floor plan of the area that I just showed. So, Watkins Road would be along this side, and the main entrance would be located here with the office, the media center, student dining stage and gym, art and music, and then this is the kitchen area. And then kindergarten is here, first grade, and then second and third in that one story. So, John, to answer your question, so we're currently showing six classrooms per each grade level. And when we talked the other day, we're looking at, as I mentioned before, the potential to expand to the end. Some of the discussion was, do we, how do we add a kindergarten if it's in the middle like that?
Right.
So, we're looking at what we could do to add classrooms in the middle, build those now, and
That would make.
Maybe use them as first grade, even though they're oversized.
That would make sense, because in the future, you just can't add kindergarten, but if you have the kindergarten rooms available, that, that would be, that would be the best sense to me to spend.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of money.
Yeah.
How many would be added? Do you, two probably?
Depends on what we build a core space for. So, you know, you have about twenty-three kids a room. So, if we're up to two hundred, so you'd have about eight rooms, probably around there.
Okay. Yeah, we could find a way to add that. That would be.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, and this, as we talked last, last month, this is still, the way this is drawn is just preliminary. We're adding square footage above and beyond what OFCC says, so we have to, if you remember from the other buildings, we have to really stretch and compress and really track down every square foot that we can to make everything fit in. But as of right now, we're right on that sixty-nine thousand square feet that we're able to afford in the twenty-four million dollar budget, so. Yeah, so it's coming along pretty well. I do have one more item to share, if, if there's no further questions on, on this. Okay, next one, please.
So, is this proceeding the way it needs? Are we where we need to be, like proceeding-wise right now? Are we, are we talking to, are we talking to the state? And I mean, are we, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're gonna approve the, well, the, on the agenda is the amendment to the master plan.
Correct, okay.
For this building. So, that'll get that part done, and then it's just from there, working about getting everything else.
On the design, okay.
So, technically, we're, to answer your question, we're a little bit ahead.
Right this minute.
Because we knew that this master plan amendment was coming.
Okay.
We knew what some of the numbers were gonna be, so we've been able to, to get to this point a little bit ahead of schedule.
Okay.
So, this is completely a different topic, but over by the high school, so Route forty is at the bottom of the screen. And this is the parking for the high school, which is off the screen. But we're looking at tennis courts, really as close to Warrior Way as we can get with parking located in kind of an L-shaped fashion around the, around those. And then we're also looking at space planning as to how we could further develop the, the property over on that side. And so, we're, the direction we've been working from right now is to move forward with a tennis court project to get this further developed and out to bid and under construction here and within the next year or so.
Your thoughts on the court location, parking?
Location, I'm okay with. The parking, I was wondering, could we take advantage of the parking on the other side of the road? And maybe just have some handicap spots near the courts?
The short answer is yes. That's part of the, that's part of the reasoning of locating them there, because it is close to the, I mean, this is the high school parking lot now. As far as only having minimal parking over there, we have to follow the zoning, and we'll get into that more. But just understanding that if we can not build as much parking, if that's an option, we can work through zoning and see what's required and.
Okay.
And try to minimize that as much as we can, yeah. And again, on, as we've talked about on other projects too, it may be, from a budget standpoint now, we build what the minimum that zoning will allow, but then still plan for, just as an example, say, we only need this kind of parking, but we would still plan this for parking maybe in the future if we needed to expand. And, you know, plan that, so we don't put something else over top of that, and then, well, we need more parking now, we have to move something else, so.
Okay.
It's another option for softball fields, right?
Right.
Yeah, is that a baseball field up north, up top?
So, this is a larger baseball field up this way. And again, if you recall from the previous projects, all of the archaeological, all of the county requirements, the Indiana bats and all that type of thing, we just have to be cognizant of all the requirements that go in to all that, so. But yeah, for, for a direction from you all, if this location is, is acceptable, then we'll, then we'll proceed.
You think you can get a softball quad above that baseball field?
We're working on that with, with them and Shira and the coaches. That's kind of like in the works for where softball and baseball would go.
Yeah.
I would, the tennis is the only thing that's definitive right now, because we need to move on those first, because those courts are in such bad shape. So, as far as the softball and baseball, those are just ideas being kicked around right now.
Well, and we, the, is there any cost savings in moving the dirt at the same time?
Yeah, ideally, that's the, that was what we talked about originally, was maybe go ahead and like for the baseball field, go ahead and level, level it out.
Yeah.
Since we're out there already, it's not gonna be more, it's gonna be cheaper having them come back and do it, I would think.
Because, like, to me, we're going to have to replace these softball fields that that school is going to be sitting on top of.
Correct.
And there are two of those, right? So, you know, I've said for years and years and years, we need another baseball field as well. If we could fit a quad up there, I think that would be.
Right, no, we, we agree, and so do the coaches. Yeah.
Okay. And that would be like probably two baseball, two softball type quad?
We, I have confirmation.
Okay.
If there's room on here to put a quad, the last that we spoke, they did not believe there would be, but they were looking at that. So, Shira was doing that. So, I'm not sure as far as the quad is concerned versus having fields like those are up there more in like the singular or.
Yeah.
But the need to replace what we currently have with the addition of a baseball field is needed.
Okay.
So.
So, we could make three work up there, even?
On that visual.
From the picture, yes.
Yes, according to that picture.
Yeah, I, I think it's safe to say at this point, that's preliminarily yes. But as Casey said, we're continuing to develop that based on our discussions that we've had so far. We know we have to do the tennis courts, and we looked at tennis courts in a couple of different areas. And we kind of came to the realization of, we need to do the tennis courts sooner rather than later, and we need to make them in that location. And then continue to develop the rest of the master plan for the entire site.
Because if we did something like this, we'd probably need all that parking then.
Yeah.
Right.
So, would these softball fields behind the tennis court be in addition to what we're placing at the middle school?
No, there's two different options.
This is a different option.
Yeah, just options.
The problem with putting the softball fields at the middle school, you can't put them there until the middle school's torn down.
We're gonna probably need something before that.
Yeah, that's the issue there, because you can't, we've gotta get kids out of that middle school and tear that middle school down before you can put them there.
Both, both the varsity coaches said that they're not, if their, if their varsity field goes to the new high school, that's great. If it stays at the old high school, that's great too. As long as they have the field space, they're not really sold or have to have their field, the varsity at one or the other. They said whatever option works the best, most cost-effective. They just need fields.
Now, logistically, though, it would make more sense for the middle school kids to.
It would there.
Have a school clo- have a.
It would, it would. And they both said that those fields could be middle school, and they could be the varsity of the high school. Because Mike Jellison said he's not, he has, will not be using the athletic facility. So, Donnie said they would probably be maybe in some capacity, but Mike said regardless, if you move my field, don't move the field. We're not planning on using the athletic facility, so it's not going to interfere with the softball program.
Okay, so if that were the case, then probably the two right next to each other, one would be baseball, one would be softball. And then the one that's in the top, that was pinned for baseball, right?
I don't know, that, that, I've not been, this visual right here.
Oh, this is new.
I was not part of that, this was recent conversation.
Wait, sorry, I got confused with the different, we're, we're good.
This was presented Monday. She wasn't here Monday, so.
You're good.
I was thinking something else, so we're good.
Yep.
I'll be quiet.
So, obviously, much more discussion to have here in the next coming weeks, but lots of things to consider, just.
I think as much parking as we can afford is always the option to go with. I mean, that's, or, or to plan ahead for as much parking as we can.
Right.
Not necessarily.
Quick question, where's the power lines? Is that showing on here?
Yeah, that's a good point, so these here.
That's the power lines?
That's the smaller power lines, not the big ones. That's the smaller ones.
The big ones are on over, right?
Yeah, on over.
Is that buildable over there or not?
So, there are requirements, and that's what these circles represent, the areas where we're not allowed to be.
Okay.
Underneath of them.
Where the big power lines go through, is any of that land usable?
I don't know how that works.
Probably not. I just, I was going by there the other day, and I was looking, and I'm just curious whether any of that could be used as fields or at all. I know we got soybeans out there, but.
Yeah. So, yeah, we'll continue to work on developing, like I said, the master plan for not only the high school elementary side, but also the east side.
So, the board's okay with that location of the test courts? Got that answer?
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, I wanna give you a, kind of the big picture update on schools and kind of run through our monthly report real quick. At Aetna Elementary, we are ready for above-ceiling inspections in, I'm gonna say ninety percent of the classrooms. I'd be starting on page seven, Joe. Couple things, we did get the switchgear in. We got the power transferred to the new switchgear, which now allows us to power up all the new mechanical equipment. And the mechanical contractors in the process of going through and testing all that equipment, testing all the piping, making sure everything is in place, not leaking, holding pressure. So, that's kind of the process we're in. We did do a change, which we thought at the time we did the change was more of an innocent change of taking out the old flex duct and putting a new section of flex duct to replace it, because it was twenty, thirty years old, and it's usually a very common material. We're having material delivery issues to get the flex duct that is right now holding us up from doing above-ceiling inspections in multiple classrooms. So, once we get that, we can then move into finishes and start finishing in, in most of the building, in all the classroom areas. They're gonna be moving from the classroom, they're going out to media center, admin area, and then down corridors of doing that same thing, getting ready for that above-ceiling inspection. Also, site work has started out there. As you've probably seen, it's kind of tore up right now, but that's in place and starting to move forward. There were probably three or four submissions to Licking County to try to get the water meter pit approved. So, those submissions just kept backing up the time that we could get it to get ordered. So, that's coming, I believe, the thirtieth, which was a big piece of the site work. And, and we're working the water line and some other areas to get that moving. At the high school, we're doing a lot of punch list. We're also working in the auditorium. The auditorium lights are finishing tomorrow. We're doing a quasi-training in the auditorium to get the people needed prepared for your incoming presentations. I think the first one's August eighth, so we'll be ready for that. There's some missing with the shipment that we got on all the wood wall. There was some missing trim at the two-side entry doors that they're working on. That is supposed to come in next week. And we're also final furniture deliveries. We're expecting the bulk final furniture of most of the items we need coming in July nineteenth. One of the big pieces there is the student desks.
Yeah.
Which would be nice to have the legs to get those up and make them look like they're actually student desks. But that is all supposed to be going in next week. Site work, there was a lot of work done last couple of weeks on the site. That was completely seeded, graded. Some issues we've had out there with the site work. One, right after we got everything completely done, I think that Saturday, we got a huge downpour. We got it like an inch, inch and three-eighths of rain, but it all came within an hour. So, we had some washout areas that have to be repaired. We do have to get our landscaper back out. He's supposed to be out this week, I believe, the sixteenth, to do maintenance on the landscape beds. And on the connector road, we are installing speed bumps and striping. Was supposed to start today and finish up tomorrow. Might end up striping on Saturday, but we'll see how that goes. But we'll see how that goes. We did get final, final occupancy that you asked about last week, we got that on July second. So that was in time. In regards to budget, just from the owner's contingency side, I, I guess big picture, looking at the four, five in the high school. The owner started with one point five million in contingency. It looks like there should be about one million remaining. And there will also be, uh, on Aetna Elementary, i- if you go through the report, we're showing a negative number in, on the contingency of seven hundred thousand dollars. But that's associated with all the alternates. So, that was a plan, that isn't an oops, that was selected by the board. Also on the four, five and high school, there will be some CMR contingency coming back to the district once we get those closed out. The CMR contingency from Aetna Elementary, uh, currently we started with about almost sixty eight thousand dollars. We've got, uh, pending changes to that contingency of forty five hundred to date. So that is doing extremely well, and we haven't done anything with Watkins in regards to any use of contingency to date. As I said, the maintenance of the planning beds is gonna be done on the sixteenth, or is scheduled for the sixteenth. The speed bumps and striping, the fifteenth and sixteenth. So we will get Warrior Way striped, speed bumped, and open. And then really in regards to the high school, besides the auditorium and, and some miscellaneous changes that as people have come into the building that we see and recognize and and adjust to, we're getting those done. The bigger change order for the business labs is ongoing right now. It's really a lot of trying to complete the punch list as they come in and stay up to date with them and get them finalized. Questions?
Did you say when the auditorium training is, or you're arranging that?
There's a, I'm gonna call it a quasi-training.
Okay.
On Friday, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I think at, I wanna say eleven o'clock or one o'clock? Do you get that?
Are all our people going to that? That's really super important. Okay, so.
And this is really more of the performance lighting.
Okay.
Of what they need and how to set it up for those initial, uh, August eighth. I think tra- uh, pr- meeting, presentation. Um, I believe in August, they are looking to schedule the formal auditorium training.
Okay, who, who is scheduling that, like who?
We'll be working with the district.
I just wanna make sure there's quite a few people that need to be, because we have a big, um, our opening day is August thirteenth, so we have to be able to know how to work everything for that.
Right, right.
Okay.
And I think, you know, again, I keep referencing August eighth, I think that's the first time they do a presentation to the teachers.
The ribbon cutting and, okay.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
It's, when I was there this week, it looked like the gutters were clogged or something because there was some significant washout by, uh, when you're walking in. So I'd like, do you go check the gutters to see if it's filled with debris? It's really creating some.
Well, as I said, we got a large amount of rain in a very short amount of time. It's not uncommon, and we just discussed this in the, uh, core team meeting yesterday, that with, with a metal roofing system in the gutter, if you do get an extremely large amount of rain in a short amount of time, there is a tendency for that to oversplash. So, it's gotta be evaluated, we know where it's happening now and we could potentially look to design or add some splash guards in there to help prevent it. We also found that there was, uh, water coming out of one of the flat roof overflows. And the way the roof drains are set up is you got a primary that should be taking care of all your water. If it stops working, there's an extra caution of the overflow drain, which it kicks into effect because it's set a little bit higher. We were getting a lot of water out of the overflow. We did go up and investigate it, there was some debris and straw up in the, uh, roof drain, so we got that undone. We should, we should not see water coming out of the overflow anymore. If it does, it's, it's a signal that there's a problem.
Yeah.
So, that was also addressed.
The huge scrape in the open area, the common area on the terrazzo.
The terrazzo.
It, that's, how are we gonna get that taken care of before the open house?
We've got, uh, we've got the terrazzo guy looking at different options to try to get it done.
And is that gonna, I know that terrazzo is, you know, lifelong, but is that gonna do any, anything to it with the scrape?
The scrape, we don't know if we're gonna be able to get the scrape completely out. So, i- i- if we can't get it out, we've gotta make it right. To make it right, we're not gonna do it for this grand opening.
Okay.
Um, there's gonna be too much work involved, just like there's a, there were a couple scrapes over at the elementary that we did some repairs, kind of made them look a little bit better, but we're also gotta revisit those to see if we gotta ultimately, uh, do more, do a destructive repair.
Okay.
And ultimately, that's what it could come down to, is that we would have to do more of a, take it up and redo some sections of that terrazzo, okay?
And, and the gym, probably the same answer?
The gym, are you referring to the swirls in the gym? So we've, we've kind of been on that one, we've talked to the contractor, we had the contractor come out, he's reviewed it. Also had conversations with their manufacturer, uh, of the, the floor and the ceiling component. We've been told, we haven't got it in the manufacturer's letterhead yet in writing, but that swirl will go away over time. Because the sealer turns, gets like an orange U to it over time, all sealers do. And once it starts ewing, that, those swirls will dissipate and go away. We've noted it, um, we've talked to Bob and the team, that this is probably something that even if we get it on the manufacturer's letterhead, we're gonna hold it as an item. If the swirls go away, great, you know, everybody's happy. If they don't, then probably next summer, it's gonna be something to refinish it to make sure the swirls are gone.
And if they have to refinish it, I'm guessing that they have to sand it all down?
Um, actually, the swirls, we had the floor refinished because we didn't like some of the scrapes and things that were showing through. We went through and had them refinish it again, thinking that, hey, this is gonna give it the perfect look when school opens, and, and we ended up with swirl marks. So it's not going all the way down to the sand.
Okay.
Those swirls are actually in a layer of seal, sealed between a couple layers of sealer.
Okay.
They say it's very common. And quite honestly, I, I can't agree or disagree with that because I've never really looked in and seen them. Um, it's not super common, you, you, you do have some dark hues that would tend to show it more. Black obviously is the most dark hue that would make it the most apparent. But the swirls, even outside the black, when, when, once you see them, you can pick them up all over. So, the plan is to get something in writing from the manufacturer that states, yes, this is common, yes, this will go away. If we get that, then we will see what happens over this year and move forward with that direction. It's, it's still gonna be noted. It's still gonna be an item that when we do our eleven month walkthrough, which will be in May probably, we'll be able to come in, look at it, see what it is. If they're there, it's gonna be refinished.
And final question, sorry guys, how do we get rid of the geese before the ribbon cutting?
Well, I was gonna charge you a little bit extra.
Okay. I didn't know if they're gonna give them to the cafeteria.
Come to my neighborhood and do it too.
I, I don't know, there's a bunch of wise tales, there's, there's products out there, there's different things. But I would love to get rid of them too because they make everything look horrible.
Yeah, they do. I didn't know if they're, I said we're gonna give them to our kitchen for a snack. They're nasty.
Yes.
Trophy cases, they'll be finished too?
Yes, there's a trim piece that we've been pushing to get that goes across the top of those trophy cases.
And then, um, the common area is the metal fence, um, are we gonna repaint that? It's kind of rusting, it's an orange color.
Either cleaned, repainted, or refinished, yes.
But it will be?
It will be addressed.
Okay, cause I'm looking at August eighth, it's like, this is our showcase for the community and I want it to be per, yeah.
Absolutely.
Want them to see what they paid for.
Absolutely.
And that they got what they paid for, so, okay, that'll be good, um, and then the classrooms that had the painting, like the, the different color, the blue, the light blue, et cetera.
Right, that was just brought to my attention yesterday. I know we were gonna, we were, I told my team to dig back into the plans to figure out what is going on there, whether that was designed as is or installed backwards, whatever it was, but whether it's designed wrong, if that's not what you want, then we gotta work together with, uh, Miller, get it reversed. If it's done wrong, I just gotta get the contractor in there and get it reversed.
Okay.
Speaking of downpours, I think.
I know, I know.
I'm gonna go look. I have one. Okay, how about the, I'm assuming there's some sort of warranty on the grass when it doesn't take? Because we planted it in a thousand degrees, so if the grass doesn't grow, are we gonna be okay?
Again, you've got an eleven month walkthrough, you're covered for a year at the elementary per se.
Yes.
Um, that didn't take well at all.
Right.
And I believe next week, towards the end of next week, they were planning on coming back in and slit seeding all of the elementary to get that grass to come in. But yes, you are owed however many times it takes us, however long it takes us to get a good stand of grass.
Okay.
See, if it would stop right now, that'd probably be about the perfect amount.
Come down this hard, I don't know, that's coming.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
And then, of course, in the back of the, uh, report, there's some really good pictures of finished areas in the high school. All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
I appreciate it.
Julie?
They talked longer, so you got thirty seconds.
And that's fine because they said everything I need to say. And I do wanna say one thing, um, Clay is really good at keeping track of his contingency, but we spent some of that on other things. Take his money with the grain, so. So, um, it's July fifteenth, um, they pretty much fulfilled us in on everything that's kind of going on right now, so we kind of skip over that. Um, we do have to schedule that eleven month walkthrough for the intermediate school, which will probably be sometime early November. Um, we're working on punch at the high school, construction's ongoing at Aetna. Um, they're still in contract buyout at Watkins, so there's still a little bit of paperwork type things that still need to be done there. Um, I always go into the risks, um, anything that's a potential schedule impact, estimates, budget reconciliation, any GMP negotiations, and allowances for later packages, although that's been working out pretty good here, so, all weather. COVID nineteen delays, we think it's all over, but there's still some issues with the supply chain that I'm being told is related to COVID. Um, where he's, he can tell he's having trouble getting stuff in. It's, it's, they're gonna, they're gonna continue for probably at least a few more months at best. Uh, the ODOT work, um, Aetna Roofing, which the district is taking care of, um, material shortages, and any cost impact of those material shortages. And that's mostly what we're seeing out there that are, could be a risk to your projects right now.
Do we, we have a company for the Aetna Roofing, correct?
No, yeah, they're working on finishing up the bed specs, so, bit it out.
Okay.
And get that working.
Um, we are currently, um, about ninety three million dollars committed, and I know we've got Kirkersville and the new Pataskala. And you're accept, you're doing the amendment today.
Let's hope they will, yes.
Okay, and then it's still gotta go to the commission after that.
Yes.
Um, the commission and the controlling board. Um, so once that happens, you're kind of, actually, your design's kind of ahead of where your master plan is. So we'll be working through that in the coming months. I think we took that off because it's not really applicable, oh, it's still on here. But we're not going through that whole process. Um, that's really all I have that they haven't already hit today. Um, there are some pictures, but I'm sure Clay's are better. Are there any questions for me?
I don't know that it's necessarily for you, but where are we on Route forty? Does anybody know where we are, maybe as far as timing? I think, I don't remember where we are, and people have been asking me that, as far as turn lane, you know, is that, is that next spring? Is that right? Will there be for, as far as our turn lane and all of that? I saw those, yeah, I saw those. Okay, so we really will have a light there and somewhat of an opening, but I didn't know if we would be detoured through our Warrior Way for part of the time or not, so. Okay, all right, good.
Any other quick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Anyone else want to add anything? We good?
You guys can go if you want.
Thank you.
Stay dry.
Stay dry.
Have fun. Good luck.
Thanks coming, we'll see you later.
Thank you guys. All right, request to speak on agenda items, Teamsters. South West Looking Education Association. Okay, we're on to approval of minutes.
Motion to approve? Second.
No discussion, Mr. Jones.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that passes, we will move on to the financial report.
Motion to approve, five A.
Second.
Including your package, it's a financial report for fiscal year end, June thirtieth, uh, very good year. Revenue ended up being about two point two million higher than we anticipated. Uh, expenditures are a little over a million less than what we anticipated, so basically we're plus almost three point three million dollars.
Fantastic.
So that's definitely a good thing, and it's still no money left for Casey to spend, could we spend it all? She has no more money.
Thank you, wrote that down.
No, I didn't write it down, so, very routine, very good year, working on budget and stuff, getting ready for the new fiscal year. Glad to answer any questions you have?
I don't have any, do any of you guys? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Zani.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes, that passes, we can move on to the personnel consent calendar, and I believe we can take all of them together.
Motion to approve six A through K. Second.
Any discussion?
So, we're, we're down to two teachers that we have to fill. Um, we did post a position today for growth. Um, we've been kind of waiting and watching numbers, but we know we're gonna need one, we think second grade may be first, so went ahead and posted for second grade, so we can get started on interviewing for that, but otherwise, um, we still have to hire a couple, a pair of professionals and bus drivers. So, we're working on it, but, um, it's coming along steady, I would say, if we don't get any more surprises.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We can move on to business items. Believe we can take.
Take all these if you want to too.
All these.
Yeah.
At once?
I move 7A through I.
I'll second that.
All right, 7A is the negotiated agreements for Teamsters local units. Basically, they were approved by the units and, um, nothing really much changed since we spoke last month about all this, so, there's red line copies. Uh, B is just policies, second reading. C is the amendment to our master plan. Uh, it's a zero-cost amendment, but this will change, basically pulls out task elementary, puts in a new K3, um, as well as frees up $300,000 that was for added swing space, allowed to go into, what they say, bricks and sticks, so part of the money we got, we put into, we should hopefully get that back because additional $300,000 state put in there, puts low share in their share, but that's a definitely a good thing. So we asked the board to approve that amendment to our master plan. Uh, D is an amendment to our 4 or 3B agreements. It drives how employees basically can take their money out, in and out. It's kind of strict right now. Um, and speaking to our attorney, this amendment kind of gives it more freedom to our staff to move their money as they need to. So I think this is a very good amendment, gives them more flexibility in how they move their money around, and that's always a good thing. E is an abatement request for guys' development. This is basically within the, the Pataskla corporate park. It's basically within the MOUs, all the requirements MOU are met, so we basically have to approve it. I'm really surprised about how many buildings don't want 100% abatement anymore because they are giving us a 12% payment move-up. So it's really a net 88% abatement form, so it's a lot of stuff you got to keep in, um, keep in mind, how nobody wants to negotiate that anymore, so. It's good for us. We'll take the payment.
That's why I had to ask you the question. Did I read that right?
Yeah, plus we get half the income tax, uh, of the city and the JED for 15 years of abatement, so it's definitely a good thing.
That has worked out really nicely.
Yeah, the MOU is working out well. Yes, it has.
For us with Pataskla, that cooperation has worked out really well.
Yes, it does. I agree. Engel Widdings, this is a prepayment agreement. We do this every year. Basically, we buy a set number of seats, they give us 10% discount to do that. That's all I have. Do you want to see the last three?
Sure. The handbooks, Tanya, do you want to touch on this? Just stay with AR? The handbooks, do you want to touch on the handbooks?
Um, I mean, the athletic handbook was really just updated, and then the preschool one, we had to get the discipline, photo conduct, and compliance, the Ohio rights, those are the only changes that there.
And then the last two are the overnight trips, one for wrestling and then one for the abandoned choir. They're going to go to New York now that we're, since the new things are back to normal. So he's been waiting, anxiously waiting to take that to the board for approval, so he'll be very excited.
And we've, we've already paid for it.
Yeah, so I hope you vote on it. So that's it for this.
That's right. I mean, we paid from a year or two years ago.
So that will be really exciting for our kids.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to the treasure items.
Motion to approve 8A through C. Second.
Uh, first one is donations, but thank you. We always appreciate that. I think there's only one donation on there. Second one is transfers, some, um, basically covering project administrative costs. You know, Mr. Jell's is not paid for general fund. It's paid from income tax we get from our various JEDs, so it's, it's basically covered outside of the community, didn't pay for it. The second one is the transfer, we had to, our yearbook has not been collecting enough money to cover the teacher stipends. So in 2005, a part of the budget cuts, the board cut and said yearbooks, memory books, ski club, those all had to be self-supporting, and basically they haven't been collecting enough money from it. She hadn't been charging enough. So the count's got to almost $5,000 and the, the principal signs off for it, so we take it out of the principal's account. One thing, I don't know if we ever want to look back at, do we still want these to be self-supporting? Like high school, I think we calculated it'd be like another $20 per yearbook, I think, on top of what they're paying now to cover just the salary and benefits.
Really?
Based on a number that, based on a number that was sold.
I don't know how much.
Think her stipend is around $3,000 to $4,000.
No, but the yearbook's almost eight, I think it was $85 a person last year.
And I do know that, um, it might be even next week, we're meeting with multiple companies for, to look at a variety of things. So we'll be able to get a better.
Costs anymore. I'm going to tell you that.
We might have to look for a better.
$85 as in?
That, that can't be, I mean, it may not have been quite, I mean, it was a lot of money though.
I was never saying that.
It was either $75 or $85. Oh, no, the high school one is a lot of money.
Yeah, it is a lot more. They collect a lot of money, but they don't give a ton back. So basically, it hasn't, she hadn't collected enough, and all they're going to do is raise the price. So the only other option is go back to prior 2005, the board covered stipend out of the general fund. But as part of the cuts, it's never been brought back. It's still that way. So, um, I told Melissa I would bring it up because it's coming out of her principal's account.
It's a lot of money.
It is.
How much is the stipend again?
I think it's around three, $3,000 to $4,000 plus benefits, which is about 17%. It's not a ton of money. And isn't the high school yearbook, is there a class too?
Yeah, there's a class, so.
A lot of times we've gone into, if it's curriculum-related, we'd switched it back. I think we did that with, like, some of the, clubs with stuff like clubs, but, um, what's the speech classes or, what are things after school in the know, that kind of thing?
Oh, um, I don't know which one you're referring to.
So some of those that were academic-related, we did basically go back to the general fund with those because we felt it was tied into curriculum and that it's maybe something the general fund should consider. So, I mean, that's something that you, the board, all the ones can make that change, uh, in the future and stuff.
I don't think it should be coming out of Melissa's account.
Yeah, it makes sense.
So the option would be is basically, whatever she gets, they can use, but then what the general fund can cover, this basically the stipend for the advisor.
And Melissa just said that the yearbooks are $65.
I might have paid extra to put the name on the front of it. That's what I'm thinking.
But it would go to $85.
We can do a comparison too, to other, other districts. I mean, and we can, it's part of our, our plan was anyways, when we're looking at different, um, companies for pictures and yearbooks, and we're looking at package deals and who offers what promotions, so that's already on the table is happening. So that might help offset things as well.
So we don't have to decide this tonight?
You don't have to decide tonight, because I mean, we don't pay her to end the year anyway, so it's something maybe we can bring up in a future meeting. Revisit some of the things the board had previously said that was, must be self-supporting. Let's see if you're, it's not a ton, it's the yearbook, it was the newspapers, it's the memory books, and ski club. I think those were the things that all were switched to self-supporting.
And we can look at it, and maybe we can have this conversation when we have a little bit of additional information from the various companies and we can have a idea of the direction that Melissa would recommend we go in. Yeah.
So I just told her I'd bring it up because this is a lot of money. And the second, the last one's in advance, basically, the high school would like to start a school store. That's kind of the design. Um, we had a conversation with her. We're trying to figure things out because I think we're going to have to pay, collect sales tax and get a vendor's license and all this stuff, so it's going to be a little bit more of a pain. But, um, Melissa and myself and Minister, we met with her, talked about it. So one of the things she wanted to do is put $1,000 into that new high school student activity account to get going. It's in advance. Once they get enough money, we'll repay the advance back to the principal's account. That's just to get it going for the, the high school store, but she wants to try to get stuff in there, hopefully by August 8th. I think she wanted to try to get something in soon, so.
This is the time of year to stock up?
Yes.
I love this so much.
And then C is, is, is related to its petty cash. Basically, they're going to, they're going to need some cash at the school store to cover, so this will allow them, you know, put 250, it probably won't be that much to start with because they won't know how much they need, but this will give them some start money, startup money each day to basically be able to give change and stuff. So this, those are all three related.
We can get some of those little cubes, kids can swipe.
That would be cool. I don't know all their plan, but that would be cool.
That would be cool.
So that's the three items I have.
I know somebody who'd like to run the cash register there because that's her favorite activity.
There you go. All right, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We'll move on to superintendent's items, back to school update.
So a couple of things I wanted to share. Um, I, we've, we've been contacted and I've seen some things on social media about the plans for school, um, COVID-related. There was a call this morning, um, with the health department. Basically, right now, as far as the school setting and sports and everything on the academic end, masks are optional. The CDC did come out with, um, regulations that masks would be required on school buses. So the, from the conversation this morning, um, and, and, and talking to some people that have talked to some of the legislators, they're, they do not believe that's going to go through in Ohio, but as of right now, that is where we're at. So the health department is recommending before anyone make announcements or publicly put things out, we just wait a few weeks, give it to the beginning of August and see where we're at, um, with that. So if, worst case scenario, um, if the new, if, if the new law doesn't go into effect till October, we would have to have masks on school buses, but not anywhere else. Can digest that for what it's worth. So that's, that's kind of the situation. So we'll, we'll, um, health department's going to reach back out, um, when they get a little bit more information on how to handle it. Um, and then we will, at the beginning of August, put a communication piece out to all our families.
The CDC, um, is it mandated or is it suggested or?
No, it's required.
Okay.
Yep. Um, although it is not required by the school district to act or to do anything if someone is not wearing the mask on the school bus. Okay, so.
And the CDC can't create law.
Correct. Correct.
Yes, just as an FYI, the CDC cannot create, is not a lawmaking body.
That's what I was.
Yes. Just as an, just throw that out there. The CDC does not create law.
So I, I feel confident that, that will probably be going away.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I did want to inform everyone that, um, I know we talk a lot about growth and enrollment. Um, our enrollment is up next month in August when I have the withdrawals out, and I feel confident I'll bring the exact numbers to everyone. But just as an example, last week alone, we enrolled almost 50 students, 48 to be precise. So we're watching that.
Just last week, not one.
Just last week.
Last week.
Last week.
Just last week. We'll, we're gonna, um, the newsletter will be mailed out August 1st to the community, so that's going to have a ton of amazing information on it. Um, Dr. Moore worked hard on putting that together, so you can kind of look for that coming. The street fair booth, uh, we'll be putting out communication on that. It's in the newsletter. It'll go out electronically as well, letting everyone know when we'll be there for people to come and stop by and see the school. See what else. Obviously, it was mentioned a couple times tonight, but we have the open house and ribbon cutting coming up. Those have been mailed out and we'll start really posting and pushing that for the open house as well, and the invitations have gone out for the ribbon cutting. Um, just as a note for you guys, convocation will be the 13th, um, at 8:00 AM. So in our new, hopefully, working auditorium. And then the last thing I wanted to share, just kind of as a, um, you know, back to school as we are, if you haven't seen or heard, we're having the parade of champions on July 24th. So, um, our, the rugby team and softball team will be honored in that as well as Meyer Shank Racing. So, um, just kind of an FYI, so that's coming up as well, so.
When is that one again?
That is July 24th.
I'll be happy.
So there you have it. That's all I have for you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Request to speak on non-agenda items, Teamsters, Southwest Looking Education Association. All right, closing item, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes, that passes. We are adjourned at 8:04.